On Yonkers Voice and today we're transmitting from Yonkers City Hall with Council President Lakisha Collins Bellamy.
Hi Rue, how are you?
I'm good.
This interview has been a long time coming, but I promised you we do it and we're getting it done.
We were the first one to interview you when you were elected.
Absolutely.
And we've been working on this, but sometimes we don't have control of the timing.
Right.
This happens, that happens, we have to postpone, but what matters is that we are here today.
Absolutely, and thank you for being understanding and patient with my...
There was no other, I had to be, you know, things like that happen to all of us. And we have to deal with what is more important at that moment, and it's the family.
Thank you for that.
And that's the family. Well, Council President, I remember that first interview when we saw the ballots coming in, we saw the victory. I interviewed you at the Casa Royale, you were happy.
And exhausted.
And exhausted, and I think you were going to go into Disneyland that day to relax.
Oh yes, oh yes, I remember it like it was yesterday, that was one of the best days ever and you were right there to capture the moment.
Yes, yes, but how long has it gone since that day?
It's been a year.
A year.
It's been a year.
Time went fast.
Absolutely, we must be having fun.
But the work is being done.
The work is being done.
Now, what work is being done? Let's talk about, let's rewind the tape, let's talk about the things that were important for you then, the things that you have done, the things that you have not been able to accomplish, because look, I understand that personally, in my personal life, I have a whole bunch of priorities and plans.
Yes.
That does not mean that I'm going to be able to accomplish all those plans that I have.
Right.
You know, things that come around, curved balls that, you know, prevents me from accomplishing certain things. Would that be the same at your level?
So, what I realized is that it's not like anything you've ever experienced. Um, we had to basically learn, there is no orientation for how to be a council president. When you start out, you have to learn even how to send a work order when a resident of the city calls in and says, "I have a complaint, I want something done." You don't know what to do until you're actually in it, so it took us some time to get the ball rolling, um, hire staff, we're still actually looking for more staff, but slowly but surely we've been getting there. Uh, my priorities are still the same, of course, housing, education, more things have come into play as I get to meet individuals throughout the city of Yonkers. Um, it's definitely something that this year my staff is meeting, we're hitting the ground running. Um, the Affordable Housing Ordinance, of course, has not been approved yet, but that's because the more we hear about what's wrong about the current ordinance, the more time it takes to fix. So it's not something we just want to put a Band-Aid on and say, "Well, here you go, here's 13, here's 15%." We are putting thought into it because there are a lot of issues, like with residents at the Apex who email us almost every day about concerns and complaints, that we want to make sure that this ordinance has in place, that it is substantial, it's not just throwing a number out there and saying, "Build this many apartments."
Council President, let me just tell somebody Rhonda Sensus, if you don't know who the lady is next to me, I don't know if to laugh or to cry, she's the youngest council president.
Well, maybe I should start with an introduction, some people weren't here, they weren't here from the beginning. My name is Lakisha Collins Bellamy and I am an attorney and a lifelong resident of the city, of the city of Yonkers. I have been the council president since January 1st of 2022. And Ms. Rhonda, we haven't met, but hopefully if you are a resident of Yonkers, we can get acquainted with one another.
Now, before we go further and people start saying, "Rue, you are disrespectful to your guest" because we see you typing in as you talk to her, well guys, I am actually monitoring the conversation to make sure that I see questions like the one from Rhonda and I can ask my guest, our guest, what you need to know. So it's not a sign of disrespectful, it's a sign of multitasking.
Alright.
Okay, now, let's go back further in your life.
Okay.
It's not like you just moved to Yonkers a few years ago, you've been a resident of Yonkers your entire life, your family's here, you went to public school, public schools. And above all, Council President, I think you understand the problems. You know, lots of people try to resolve problems without actually understanding the problems.
Right.
One thing is me talking about issues with the homeless, another thing is me being a homeless.
Right.
And then trying to deal with those problems.
Right, so for me, the housing issue is near and dear to my heart. I am also an employee of the Yonkers Municipal Housing Authority where I grew up, I lived in Cottage Place Gardens, which I say often, and I am quite proud because when you come from places like public housing, most people assume that you're not going to make it out, that you're not going to become something. When I lived in Cottage, I knew more people who did drugs than graduated from college. So to be where I am today, I am proud to say that I am from Cottage Place Gardens. So I lived there from 1985 to 1992, and then when the DSEG order happened, I moved to the townhouses on the east side, so I lived through housing DSEG, I've lived in public housing, I've been a single mother at a time, so I understand the quests and some of the hardships that our residents face here in the city of Yonkers, which gives me a unique perspective. And then having worked in the housing industry, like one of our committee meetings, we were talking about the Affordable Housing Ordinance and they asked a question like, "But why do we need six bank statements?" And my answer to that was, "Well, when you calculate rent, six bank statements is the value of that asset." If you didn't work in the industry, you would know that, you would just think they're being nosy. But in addition to it being the value of the asset, that's where you find all the juicy stuff, like the deposits going into the account, like, "Oh, you're an Uber driver, you didn't tell us that," in those checking statements. So when we meet with people and they say, "Well, why do they want so much information?" I can explain to them what to choose for and why they need it. And most people knows, or when you don't tell them something they don't want to hear, it's an easier blow when you explain why it is. So being in the positions I've been in gives me a very unique perspective.
How did you know I was an Uber driver?
You picked me up one day.
Oh! Look, as you know, we are live and people are engaging and asking questions, so sometimes the questions might come and it looks like it comes out of place, meaning there is a delay between this and what people see on Facebook.
Okay.
So they might ask something that we already passed, or maybe they ask something that we did not get there yet.
Okay.
Okay, uh, homeless issue in Yonkers, it's a big problem. People think that because you are an elected official or other elected officials, that anything that happens on the streets of Yonkers, it's your problem.
Right.
Okay, so sometimes educating a little bit, it's important, look.
Oftentimes, education is important.
Look, I understand the problem.
Yes.
But this is what I can do about the problem, or I cannot do much about the problem. So not every problem in Yonkers falls into your lap.
Right, so the city of Yonkers, of course, is the local government, so our jurisdiction is the most limited because the county has certain powers, New York State has certain powers, and of course, the federal government. At the local level, homeless and social services are the jurisdiction of Westchester County. So when we talk about homeless people, there's DSS that is run by the county. However, in the city of Yonkers, we have like drop-in centers on North Broadway, we have agencies like WestTab. So when I see an individual, for example, there was a man sleeping in front of DSS for some time in the summer, and I called WestTab, "Hey, do you know this guy?" They said, "We'll send our outreach workers out, we probably know him." And sure enough, they had, but it's those type of relationships. We are limited in what we can do because the role is that of the counties, but we can do outreach, of course, get more information out so people who are homeless know where their resources are if they decide to act on it. Some people are homeless and they don't want to do anything about it, like people who have drug abuse problems. They may have the issue, but they're not ready to address it, so we can't force people.
But many people, not every situation is like that, but there is many people that, many cases of people who are homeless and they don't want to be in that situation.
And that's where you educate them on what their resources are, what's available to assist them, whether it's a shelter or a drop-in center like what WestTab has, to take a shower, get a hot meal, things of those natures.
Go to the bathroom, because we see them here in our area.
Something as simple as using the restroom.
They're humans, they're going to have the human necessity.
Absolutely.
A lot of the local businesses will not allow them to go in and use the bathroom.
Right.
Are there, there is bathrooms around here, maybe YMCA, maybe the Salvation Army?
Right.
That are community centers, do they allow them to go and use the bathroom if it's necessary?
I believe most of them do, but there are drop-in centers, after we're done, I'll give you the resource, maybe you could post it.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Because I think information is key. I think that very often people complain about problems, but they don't understand the problem. Okay, they don't know about the resources, they don't understand where the help is, and if you don't understand, then you cannot go and get the help that you so much need.
And certain things, social media is a gift and a curse. It makes a wealth of information available at your hands, but it also creates that if I didn't see it, it didn't happen. So when they see incidents like the individual sleeping on the ground, it's like, "What are our elected officials doing?" "Well, you don't know, I sent an email to WestTab to check on this person and they went and the person said they didn't want to go." "Do I go and broadcast? I'm broadcasting live from here, look what I'm doing." Well, sorry Rue, but, but no, it just creates a sense of, if you aren't showboating what you do for people, then people assume that you aren't doing anything. Whereas I'm the person that would rather do the work without getting the praise for it, I just want to make sure it's done. A lot of people don't respect that because they don't see it happening.
I have to disagree with you, okay, I have to disagree with you because look, social media, it's a powerful tool nowadays.
Absolutely.
Things are not what they used to be. Years ago, the city, the police department, any organization could write a memo and send it to the News 12 and they would publish it exactly as the elected officials, police, or whoever sent it to them. That narrative was lost.
Yes.
Now people can go on Yonkers Voice and see things exactly as they are happening, not how the city wants them...
To paint the picture.
Exactly, things are different.
Yes.
The control of the narrative was lost.
Yes.
And because that control of the narrative was lost, there is some friction because they cannot just say what they want to say, because now people can see exactly what happened.
Absolutely.
But social platform is the same platform that you promote your campaign.
Yes.
When I say "you," I mean in general.
All electeds, yes.
All elected officials, that you call this one or that one, I'm not against saying about you, I'm just talking about, it happens everywhere. You see that presidential elections are now won or win by social media, who puts more into advertisement? So it's important, but it's also important, Council President, that people like me use social media in a responsible way.
Right, right.
And don't use the platform that we have or the followers to harass people like you. Okay, like you and many others, okay? We have individuals that the only mission that they seem to have is arrest people. And you addressed it, you addressed it and you addressed it in a very emotional way.
It was an emotional day.
It was an emotional day, I had ghost bumps when I was listening to you. But was it the right place to do that? If you think back and you say...
If I think back on, and we're referring to the council meeting in which the term of limit vote was taken, I was torn because usually when I'm upset or feeling something, I generally process it quietly until I know how I feel and then I'll speak on it, because you never want to say the wrong thing because you can never take words back. So I am mindful of when I say things, however, I had a conversation with an individual that said to me, "You know, if you don't say anything, people create their own narrative."
That is correct.
So I prayed like, "Lord, curd my tongue," because all the words I had up until that point were not nice ones that I wouldn't say in front of my mother. So I just prayed like, "Lord, please brighten my tongue, give me the words to say." And my husband said, "If you don't tell your truth, I'm gonna come and tell it for you," and I didn't want him to show up at the meeting. So I did, it's unfortunate, I do regret how the meeting turned out because of the impact it had on certain individuals' lives and, you know, I'm praying for people that are going through hardships, of course, from that night. Um, but I can't tell a person they are wrong for telling their truth. I may not agree with it, I may not agree with how it was done, but people are allowed to speak their truths. And at the end of the day, we're all human, although we are elected officials, we're humans, we go through emotions. At that point in time, I had lost someone near and dear to me, uh, the Sunday before the Monday meeting we had at the library. So as I'm sitting up on this stage, like under these lights, I'm trying to stay focused on the task at hand. I didn't want to even come because I had lost someone and I'm grieving, but if I didn't come, then it appears that I don't care. So I was stuck between a rock and a hard place, do I go here and go through the motions when I'm devastated? So I went and I sat there and I'm listening intently because I know if I drift to my thoughts, I'll be up on the stage crying. So I'm listening intently and some of the things that people said, especially targeting or saying, "I'm speaking to you, the black women," like we were singled out more than one time. And these are same individuals that we may have past relationships or dealings with. So it was hurtful in a sense of, "Here I am grieving the loss of my brother" and you're like, "I put you here, I can take you out, how do you sleep at night?" And it's like, I'm not, I'm crying because I just lost my brother in a tragic car accident on the Cross County and now I'm sitting here and you're yelling at me about a vote that I come to realize wasn't as important. Not that it's not important, but when it comes to your family and them being alive to a vote, that if a person wants to vote away, they will, and if they don't, they'll vote another way, it didn't measure up. So for me, it was, I have to go show up because if I don't, then it looks like I don't care and I'm sitting here and I'm fighting back tears and I was looking for grace. And I felt like in that moment, I didn't receive grace from people that I expected because we had had conversations leading up to that vote. I had spoken to many people in the community about why I was thinking the way I was. For example, most people don't know that in city government, the budget, the money, the taxpayer dollars is under the mayor's control for the most part. So why would you not want to have a great rapport with the individual that, let's say, for example, the residents in the city of Yonkers want a sign fixed or their sidewalk fixed? Those people that do the work are the mayor's employees. I can't call up DPW and say, "Hey, go pick up this garbage," because they are the mayor's staff. So if you don't have a great working relationship with the mayor, then how do you expect to get things done for your constituents? And that was my train of thought going into this vote. And I was just looking like, maybe someone, I'm an attorney, so I'm always thinking of what the alternative argument would be. So I'm looking for someone to come to me with an argument that isn't, "You can't do that" because by definition, the role of the legislative branch is to write law. So we're doing what we are tasked to do or don't do that. Like I was looking for more than the "you can't, you don't, don't do that."
Hold on that thought before, there is something that I need to interject here. You said a line that that day, that to me and I think to many others, it impacted us in a certain way. And many said, "She's a very strong woman," and the comment is, "Lakisha, go, Lakisha, go." I am not the black puppet, but if you are going to call me a black puppet, add "Esquire" at the end. Who was that focused to?
Well, we all know, I pray for individuals I don't feed into.
No, 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 but you see, but you see, I think the same way as you, okay? But it's important to understand the differences between reporting and maliciously causing misinformation and friction out there.
Yeah.
Okay, it's important to stay focused and understand.
Yes, for me, the comment was a lack of respect. I am, I respect everyone, even if we have differences, I'm gonna come from a place of respect and compassion and grace because that's the walk of life that God has for me. And then there were also people saying, "Don't bring God into this, honey, if I don't walk in this building with God every day, I may not make it out." So God is at the beginning and God is at the end, always.
And in the middle.
An apology in the middle as well. Unapologetically, I am, I would not be where I am if it were not for God. So wherever I go, I'm speaking his praises, if that offends people, take that up with whoever you pray to. But to that point, it was a lack of respect for me and it wasn't even the puppet comment. I could take puppet, you're a puppet, okay, I know who I am, that's fine. It was the little black, like coming from the neighborhood I come from, when you go to school and you're a mixed monk, mixed crowds and someone calls you a little black anything, that imagine a little black girl and it's like, "You little black so-and-so," it diminishes and takes away from that person and who they are supposed to be. So that was hurtful of that person to say, and that was my only point. Like, you could have said puppet all day and I would have been fine, the little black, like you're diminishing who I am. But let me remind you, if you're going to say little black, put Esquire on the end. And I thought about that this morning, I told my son in first grade, "If you build your house on bricks, no one could blow it down." So I said to him, I'm like, "You know, your education is those bricks, your foundation. If you build your education on bricks, no one could blow it down." I gave him the analogy of the three little pigs. And in that situation, that was my foundation, like no one could take away from me what I've accomplished. I have a master's degree in public administration from Marist College, I have a bachelor's degree from SUNY New Paltz, which is now a university, shout out to New Paltz, and I have a law degree. And I did all of this while either first becoming pregnant with my son or with my six-year-old. I started out and graduated law school in three years while working full-time and raising my son as a single mom and he walked with me at graduation. So those are important to me, and when we think back on it, it's like, "But why did I delay?" But to have my nine-year-old be able to see me walk across that stage and understand the hard work that I had put into it was gratification because now he knows there is no barrier for me, because if my mom can do it, I can do it. So that comment from me was like, "Let me remind you, yes, I am, my skin tone is that of an African-American, it is dark." Yes, little, that's arguable, I'm working on it, but Esquire, let's not, at the end, whatever it is, please put Esquire, I worked very hard.
I have a very similar saying, that if you have a mansion that you build in a beach somewhere, it's not gonna last. The first wind blow is gonna come down, foundation is everything. But you gave a good life story to your son.
Yes.
But there is lots of sons out there that are hearing that message that you gave to your son, that lots of young black girls and white girls and whoever out there that need to understand that the foundation is on education. Things don't come easy, no one gave you a plan here, this is it.
Exactly.
You work for it, so all of you watching this, let this...
Don't quit.
Exactly.
Don't quit.
But also be prepared if you fall.
Get up again and again and again. Even when I started law school, I started out knowing it would be four years because I had to go part-time, no one was gonna pay my bills and take care of my child. And people would say, "Well, how are you gonna go to class four nights a week and you work full-time and you have a baby?" And all I could say was, "If God brought me to it, he was going to bring me through it." So I don't know the answer, but all I know is it's gonna happen or else he wouldn't have put me in the position I'm in. So to those young women that are thinking about going back to school and feel like, "I don't know how I'm gonna do that when I have a child," if you have to, take your child with you to class. Get it done, if that is your...
Just do it.
Just do it, the time will pass anyway, you'll look up and four years would have gone by and you could say, "Hey, I could have been done." So get started, don't give up.
I have a question from somebody who was involved that Tuesday, was it a Tuesday or Thursday, I forgot.
Um, the library was Monday, the vote was Tuesday.
Tuesday, that's somebody who was very involved and that's actor Santiago.
Yes.
We all know actor because he's been involved in the community, Stop and Shake. This is what he asks me to ask you. Ask the council president her thoughts on the violence that happened at the city hall at that last term limit meeting. We already spoke about it, but I will ask again for you, Hector.
So my thoughts and prayers are with you, Hector. It's unfortunate what happened, of course, it's an ongoing investigation, an open court case, so as a lawyer, you know I can't speak on it, but my heart goes out to you.
Donna Nolan says...
Hi Donna.
Says, "No questions, but tell her she's a rock star."
I love Donna Nolan, she's awesome, she's, she's a mom and is a giving, caring person that I got to meet while campaigning and one of the most powerful things she shared with me is allowing me to come to her son's gravesite and I brought him flowers, but...
Let me tell you, go ahead.
She's, she's a rock star.
Well, Donna and I politically, we are water and oil.
Oh yes, and I think we're the same.
Yeah, but personally, I love her.
Absolutely.
And my cousin Jim, I like them, we talk to each other, we call each other, but I'm proud to say, and I wish more people could do this, even though you might have political differences, be able to respect each other and talk to each other.
Absolutely, the fact that she is still standing after what she's been through makes her the rock star in my eyes. Like I, my hat is off to her, that she is able to, I'm struggling with the loss of a brother. I can't imagine the loss of a child, I would be done.
Yes.
So my hats are off to you, Donna.
What's coming up, what are your future plans?
I have so many things that I would love to do. Um, some of them have been, for example, fentanyl legislation or ghost guns legislation. And court counsel will say, "Uh-uh, you can't do that because the state has their own legislation." And even if ours is in line with theirs, it's like, if they change their law tomorrow, you'd have to go back. So if our law says includes everything in Schedule A drugs, that includes fentanyl. I'm like, "Ah, man, but I want to do fentanyl legislation to let people know that I'm thinking about it and I care." But that's generally how it goes. I do want to do a drug awareness workshop this, sometime this year. Um, there are a couple other things housing related that I would like to do in the first half of this year.
Fentanyl, it's a serious problem.
Absolutely.
Very serious. We know the drug addicts, some of them take it voluntarily, but there is others, like Olivia Green, that they have no idea what they're taking, they might go to somebody's home, they have a headache, take this...
Not knowing.
Not knowing and it buy me a lace. Now let me take this opportunity to, to inform you that, well, let's make you understand the other point. Sometimes we report that somebody is OD'd and I get family members coming to me, "Who the hell are you, how do you know it was OD'd?" Guys, just because you OD'd does not mean, does not mean that you are a drug addict.
Right.
If you take...
You took too much.
Yeah, or if you took too much.
That's what an overdose is, you took too much of something.
If you took fentanyl, even if it's unknown to you...
A grain of salt amount of fentanyl can be deadly.
Yes.
And that's what a lot of people don't know.
And even if you don't know what you took, but you died from it, you died of an overdose.
Right.
So that's what overdose means. Now, there is some overdose that are intentionally, you intentionally took more than you should and you die for it, but there is lots of...
People who unintentionally overdose. I was reading in the newspaper this morning before you got here about a high school student in New Rochelle and then they're saving their life from an overdose. And it's unfortunate and it's things like that that we want to bring awareness to because I think a lot of children don't understand and now they make the drugs look like candy, so people pick it up. That happened to me one time, it wasn't drugs, it was Ex-Lax. My mom had the chocolate Ex-Lax in the refrigerator, I thought it was candy, I ate it. I went to the bathroom for a long time, but it's things like that that kids...
You never ate it again.
I never did it again without asking, but chocolate Ex-Lax was my learning lesson when it came to, "Don't eat things just because you see it and it looks like candy."
The good thing is...
It was only Ex-Lax.
It was only Ex-Lax, all you got was diarrhea.
That's it.
But the fentanyl, there is no way of coming back.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So moral of the story, guys, don't take medicine...
If you don't know where it came from.
If you don't know where it came from.
Absolutely.
And better yet, if you're not home, don't take it. If the pain is not that much, wait until you get home, because maybe...
Go to the doctor, go to the emergency room.
Because maybe the person who gave it to you...
Doesn't even know.
Doesn't even know.
That's the scary part.
That's the scary part, sometimes it's not like they intend to give you it, sometimes they don't know what they're giving you. So since it's your life, handle the pain.
Yes, or go to the emergency room, go to a medical professional for medicine, not someone off the street.
Are you running into 2024? This question comes from John Van Nostram.
Tell John to leave me alone, I'm working here.
John, you heard it, you heard it.
Hi John, John is my, John is my former coworker.
Yes.
That is for God to decide, I usually don't make plans, you know, they say the best laid plans are a joke to God. So I just pray on what it is that he wants me to do and then I follow. Uh, 2024 is a ways away from here, I still have some hard work to get done in this role and I love what I'm doing, so I'm focusing on this.
You think 2024 is ways away from here, let me tell you a little secret.
Absolutely.
Let me tell you a little secret, it was a year ago that I thought that 2023 were ways, ways, ways from here. When I woke up was already 2023.
I don't know what's going on in 2024, what offices are up, but I still have time here, I just got in 2022, I got four years, don't rush me, John.
We have lots of opening positions now, 2023.
Well, yeah, it's 2023 to take office in 2024, so...
Where are you standing on this thing? Where are you standing on this thing, on this race? I see lots of people trying to swap. It's a riot, for the lack of a better word.
For me, it's difficult because on one end, I understand from being in that position last year and not having. A lot of people behind me. So the people that were behind you, you kinda wanna return the favor. It's a double edged sword. I'm gonna stay back, see how it plays out. And if I make a decision, it will be closer towards the primary time.
Who are you supporting?
Lakisha.
No, 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 no. You sure you're not voting for somebody else?
I am, I have, I have not made any decisions yet. I have individuals like, for example, the first district, I've known Shatika Parker for years before I became an elected official. We have a relationship, we have mutual family relatives. So I kinda like Shatika as a person coming from the background I've come from. It's similar. And as I said, we have mutual family.
Yeah, but that's not how, why people should.
No, that's why I said I'm staying back. Well, if you don't have one, it's kinda hard when you're a new person.
Doing your homework now.
Right. And in the first, there won't be an incumbent if Shanae is running for the sixteenth.
Now today, uh, Mayor Max Spano might be publicly saying that he's running.
Yeah.
He's on the race. You know, until now, we've been talking about term limits, but he never said, I am on the race. Where is your support on that?
When it comes to the mayor, first, he never asked, hey, change the term limit. I continually asked him, what are you gonna do? You're running? Stop telling me you're tired. I don't like it, don't wanna hear it. Because some of the names of the individuals that were discussing, hey, I wanna be mayor, made me nervous. Because as I said, as a city council president, as an elected, you wanna have a great working relationship. We talk about in twenty twenty five, the budget cliff that we may be falling off. We need someone in office that knows how to handle that, not someone still trying to figure it out. So for those reasons, I supported the term limit. If he comes out and says he's running, I'm behind him.
But look, I remember one of my interviews, interviews with the mayor, I asked him, I said, mayor, are you running or you're not running?
He can blame me for harassing him continuously.
Arrest him too?
Yes, I did.
So did I? And he told me, no, no, I'm not, no.
My wife is gonna kill me, all that stuff. And I'm like.
He tell me, and I said, what if the people ask you to run? What if the people are happy with the work that you have done? And I told him, look, not everyone is gonna like you.
Right.
Not everyone's going to support you, but that's life.
Right.
Not everybody likes me, not everybody supports me, but the large majority does. And I guess the same applies to you.
Right. So when it comes to the mayor's race, I love to see who decides to jump in. I haven't seen many express interest yet publicly.
Public.
Um, I hear murmurs about it, but we'll see. It should be an interesting year.
It's going to be an interesting year. Anything that specifically that you would like to talk about, Council President? Something that the people, I like exclusives. I like people to say, okay, I'm gonna tell you something I haven't told. Do we have any exclusives? Jackie's saying like.
Jackie's, we have exclusives?
No.
Oh, um, let's see, what do we, I think this will be one interesting year in politics. On this end, I would love to know more of what the residents of the city of Yonkers want from me. I've thought about doing like a. My friends called it like key keys with Ke- with Keisha, like just go town halls and go out and meet the public. That is one thing I feel like I need to do better. I'm not one of those people that thinks that I'm just the greatest and there's no room for improvement. I know I can improve in ways of being more out there. I'm I'm an only child, so I can be an introvert. Um, but getting out there, meeting with the residents of the city of Yonkers, hearing their concerns and and working with them. So that's one area that I would like to improve and do more of.
Now, Council President, if the people of Yonkers wants to address you, they want to talk to you, they wanna. See what you can do because of a problem that they might be having. Are you approachable? Is that a system that they can call? Is that a survey? Is that an email? What is the process? Cause I know you're a busy person.
Oh, yeah. Then I have a whole nother job that it's, and that's another thing, the fine line, I walk with my full time employment. I work, as I said, for the municipal housing authority. So when people like, well, why can't I meet with you on a Wednesday? Uh, because I better be at my job and not on camera doing videos when I'm earning a paycheck elsewhere.
Except the Yonkers Voice.
If he comes to housing, we'll we'll meet on a Wednesday. But just people not being able to understand the balance of the two. Like the hardship I went through almost being told I needed to resign from my job at the housing authority because there was a conflict. And I don't give up. So I still have my job. Thank God. I love it. But back to your question, the best way to reach my office would be council president at yonkersny.gov. Council president at yonkersny.gov. The telephone number here is nine one four. Three seven seven six zero six zero. Call our office. I have wonderful staff that will be ever nice to you. Um, try to assist you and resolve the matter. They've been great in in that way, being able to get the job done without me having to get involved.
Guys, just a suggestion, and if you contact through email and you don't get an answer, don't give up.
Don't give up.
Again. Call again until you become a pain you know where, until they say, our mind as well, answer. So, so keep calling. It's it's your problem. They work for us. Her, I mean, all elected officials. So if it's your problem, the best person, the best interest is on your side to have that problem resolved. So don't give up. As the council president said earlier, don't give up. And if you fall, get up. So if you call, you don't get an answer. Email again, call back, call back and call back until your issue is addressed. Because remember, they get hundreds, if not thousands of females. And everybody's problem is the biggest problem. It's the most important.
And it is, it is. However, we're three people here full time. I'm not here full time. Some of my other staff is not here full time. So please, don't feel slighted. Send another email, give another call, and we will do everything we can to assist.
We are about to conclude this interview. I have to remind you, we can go on and on, but we can make another one. But I have to give my condolences to my friend, Zehi Zares.
Yes.
Okay, his mother passed last yesterday, I believe.
Yeah.
Our condolences to you, Zehi. And thank you guys for watching. And remember, Yonkers Voice does not endorse or oppose any candidate. My job for the last eighteen years has been to inform you. Do I have personal preferences? Of course I do. But does the page itself endorses any particular person? Of course we don't. But every single one, every single elected official or person running for an elected official, opposition are welcome. To come into Yonkers Voice, to talk about their platform, to talk about their vision, to talk about what they wanna do for Yonkers if they are elected. So if you are one of them and wanna come on, reach out. YV dot support at yonkersvoice dot com. Reach out, talk to us, set up that interview.
It's worth it.
Okay, and we.
That's a plug. But it is, it really, it truly is. It truly is. When you're running for office, because your platform is so large, it's the opportunity to get that exposure. That you need to reach as many people because you cannot knock on every door, especially if you're running citywide here in the city of Yonkers. So a platform like yours helps to get your face, your message out to people.
And we do that without arresting anyone.
Right, or shaking them down, right?
Shaking them down. Or like the other guy said, extorting. Guys, we sell ads, we don't extort. We invite you, as we invite the council president. She bought it, others refused, which is okay. Nevertheless, we will still cover them when they ask us for coverage.
Yes.
Thank you for watching. Appreciate your support, appreciate your love. And don't forget, support us. By asking your friends, family members to follow Yonkers Voice on Facebook, Instagram. And to subscribe to our channel on YouTube. That's how you can support Yonkers Voice. Any final words for closure? The closure is all yours.
I just want to thank the residents of the city of Yonkers for putting their faith in me. It's not something that I take lightly. As you can see, I, even in my time of grief and losing someone, being there for the residents of the city of Yonkers. I will continue to show up. I don't know everything. If there's something that you need or want from me, reach out. The doors always open and I appreciate you and your support. Thank you.
And I can vouch for that. The council president is reachable, okay? You might not reach her on first attempt, or you might not reach her directly. But you will reach one of the assistants, the assistants that can help you further and move whatever. Your question is in the direction that he needs to go. Thank you. Until next time.
Take care.